Call the meeting to order. First thing to do is approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on May 5th.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and accept the yes.
Second.
Remove, Colley seconds, all in favor. All in favor, we're here. Any public comment? Doesn't appear to be. Move right on to action items. Amendment to extend the agency agreement with Heritage Real Estate. The city's agreement with Heritage Real Estate expired April 4th. Eric submitted the enclosed amendment to extend the agency agreement to April 4th, 2022. And it looks like the original agreement was dated 3/21/2016 and has been extended annually since that time.
I would move a further amendment to extend the agency agreement. One second.
My moves, Ray seconds, all in favor. All in favor. Hundred fifty plus one celebration. Courtney contacted Tammy about a commitment previously made to help sponsor Mitch Holtis at 750th. With a donation of $1,000. Mitch has agreed to speak at the 150 plus one celebration. Courtney emailed to ask if the city was still willing to contribute. She forwarded the enclosed letter, which she believes she sent to Matt around the end of September 2019. Could not find any minutes where the council agreed to the $1,000 sponsorship. So she's brought to our attention for your information and approval. I don't remember if any of you know anything about it. I heard some comment about he figured there was going to be more than that request. So I don't think it ever came as an action item.
Never did, as far as I know, unless there's a meeting or whatnot.
I don't remember.
That's something he kept under his hat.
How many of them is supposed to speak?
It's going to be Friday night, the 150th weekend of Jan- January, geez Louise, June 11th. At about 7:00 PM. It's going to be out at Skook Park also, I believe.
Majority stuff going to be going on? I haven't seen much of what's actually going to carry.
Well, you know, there's been a lot of fires in my fire reason.
Oh, I just haven't seen anything.
No, actually I have the flyer just about done and getting ready to put it out. But so the, the Hospital Foundation is the one who's kind of spearheading this with Mitch speaking and stuff. And it's the Friday night. And then a lot of the other stuff is going on Saturday during the day and into that evening. So this was something that the Hospital Foundation kind of put forth. It was their idea and, and that type of thing. And, yeah.
As far as we know, there's no other financial commitments for anything else for that celebration as far as from the city's perspective?
Not what I'm aware of.
In 2019, so the, I don't know if you, I, I remember Matt having it, but I don't know. I don't remember what got brought to us. The chamber had sent out information about like sponsorship levels for businesses. At a travel and tourism meeting in 2019, it kind of got said that that group recommend, we approved. So we recommended to the council to sponsor like the advertising for the event up to the $3,000 mark, which it's not going to be anywhere near $3,000 for the advertising. But that was the top tier of membership. I've been keeping track. I have, don't even think I've spent more than a couple hundred dollars yet on advertising. So that was approved at, at the travel and tourism meeting. And I think it got brought here, but I don't, I think it was a part of like our packet that gets approved when the travel and tourism grants get approved.
So realistically, the travel and tourism is paying for advertising?
Basically, and that's it from the city. Yeah.
So that's what we were struggling with. And because it got through, extended another year, it made it difficult to remember.
Right, exactly.
And I think I do remember him bringing up, I think we did allocate some money for the Big Ants Road trip, for a big advertisement. I do remember us approving something for that.
Yeah, that got approved. That was in our book that we had.
That was in one of our meetings to approve that. I remember that, but I didn't remember anything else as far as the 150.
Yeah, I think it was just a side note either at a meeting, a committee meeting, or something that he said we'll probably get hit with more stuff too. So I don't think it was ever brought to our attention, is what I understood, the way I believe it happened, or to the full council.
I wish I could get $3,000 to come to speak, but I'll make the motion to go ahead and approve $1,000 for Mitch Holtis.
He said 1,000, how many?
1,000.
1,000?
Well, yeah, but he's giving 3,000.
My second.
Jim makes a motion, Steve seconds, all in favor. Five in favor, six in favor, all in favor. Next thing is the aquatic center wages. Aaron has a breakdown here. I've been working with Logan with suggestions here in our memo. Guess you can run with it.
Yeah, so I had, I mean, I presented the bonus program to you guys earlier and how that would kind of almost make them break even to that minimum wage for the concession workers and kind of bump their pay up if you got the bonus at the end of the year. After talking with Logan, like she has a lot of good ideas of how to reward the guards during the season, like for their good work. Not necessarily monetary value, but you know, different things here and there, just little, little, I don't know, like not stickers, but yeah. Like just little things like that, you know, here and there. And then with that piece of it, we thought maybe instead of that more comprehensive bonus claim, just flat out raising the wages. I've looked at other aquatic centers throughout the state and none of them start below minimum wage for any type of employee. I think if we do, if we raise the concession worker wage to minimum wage at least, that would possibly get some more staff coming in that would want to be concession workers and come back year after year because now you know they're staying maybe a year, maybe two. Most of them are converting to lifeguards, but not all of them. And then we also, Tammy and I checked around at some other local places that were hiring and all of them were at least at minimum wage for 14-year-olds as well. Majority of them actually were above minimum wage, but just would like to be able to keep decent staff and wanting the kids to come back. And so these recommendations were kind of just what Logan and I thought were a good push for this.
With a pool manager, is there a need for assistant managers or how's that work?
There will be because there'll be more than 40 hours a week, like where the pool would be unlocked and locked. Or the manager may be away some, that the assistant manager would need to step in and play that manager role. I had planned to have her, when she sees the guards work and things like that, have her recommend two people for assistant manager. Just based on the hours that the pools actually open and then swim lessons are going on. Even though we're only open, I don't remember what I figured the other day, seven? Like 60 hours a week, like to the public, once you add the swim lessons and the swim team practices that our guards work at as well. It's quite a few more hours than that in a week's time. So I feel that we would still need a couple assistant managers.
Wasn't it, if I'm remembering right, it was two assistant managers with the pool manager?
Yes.
But if we didn't have a pool manager, we would have more, right?
Yeah, at least three assistant managers then.
But those, those, but not decided that they're waiting to buy, they're just going to wait to buy?
Yep, she's going to wait, kind of meet with them, interview them, and then watch them work as well. And then she's going to recommend two and then I'll bring it to you guys.
So what are, what are the starting salaries right now?
Concession workers start at $6 an hour, lifeguards at $7.25 an hour, and assistant managers at 9 an hour.
So if you raised it minimum wage, which is 7.50, right?
7.25.
7.25.
For the concession workers, the lifeguards, I'd like to bring up a dollar from 7.25 to 8.25. And assistant managers, I feel that with the manager, they're not going to be quite as, have quite as much as they would if that manager wasn't there. So I got a 50 cent hour raise, starting from, instead of 9 to 9.50 an hour, starting for assistant managers. But that's why I didn't bump them up that dollar.
So what do you estimate the increase would be?
Obviously, I, I didn't full on look at the increase, like what it might come out to at the end of the year, hour-wise. It's kind of hard to compare to last year because our hours were shortened pretty, well, by a few weeks. I can look at that. The, the reason I was hoping to maybe get action on it tonight is because our first pay period for the guards will be before the next meeting. So if you want me to, I mean, I can do. I think though, based on the bonuses that I was looking at, this will probably end up being less. And I did still add a bonus at the end of the season, as long as the work guards have worked what they've been scheduled. And that way that hopefully they are coming to work on time, meeting all the rules and guidelines that are set forth in the manual that we have. And then hopefully they're picking up shifts, you know, not, oh, I can't work today, I can't work today, I can't work today sort of thing. Because I think that's happened a lot in the past as well. They agree that they want the job and then, oh, I forgot I have this activity four nights a week and it's during prime pool hours, so.
Because the original bonuses you had showed us earlier, they were quite a bit more, right?
Yeah, they were.
Based on?
Based on hours worked and off of the raises and things.
So the raises of these smaller bonuses kind of even out?
Yeah.
I think it sounds like a good idea.
Have you got most of your positions and how people that work or?
Yep. I should have counted today. I think I have 16 guards and then the manager and six or seven concession workers. So we're, I think, I think we'll be pretty covered for the summer, from what I could tell at this point anyway.
I like the whole idea, especially with looking at being there, I think it might help a little bit. You gotta try something.
And we did, I mean, the application that we sent out to the guards is the same application that we use for all employees here. And part of it is like your desired salary, which you know is probably one of the most awkward questions to ever ask anyone, especially a teenager coming into a job. But definitely, a lot of them wrote minimum wage or, you know, a lot of them that were returning knew what their wage would be, so they wrote that in. We had a few that wrote $12, $13 an hour, which obviously I let them know in the interview that that wouldn't be happening, but that.
So when you, when you were comparing what other aquatic centers pay, were you also taking a look at what their admission price was and their season passes and that type of stuff?
I did look at some of them, not all of them, some of them that were comparable. Compared to Sabetta and Hiwaka, we are pretty much right there with them as far as admission prices. I think their season passes were a little more than what we had charged. I really planned this year utilizing Logan and I told her I would like a very like clear year of documentation of like what money is coming in, what it's, you know, like, because I can't really find a lot of full records of this, this, and this just that are there. And so I plan to do that this summer and do some more comparisons like with other pools. But around these area ones, we are pretty comparable as far as our admission prices and things like that. I know, I just took that aquatic facility operator course and there were a bunch of people from all over the state. And the guy who was the instructor is out of Wichita, so he's over all the Wichita pools down there, which I think he said he has 23 pools and swashbags and stuff that he's over. And he said the only way their pools make money is at their concession stands. And so that is another thing I've kind of looked at with Tammy a little bit too. Our concession stands, what our base cost is, and if we've raised prices or need to raise concession prices and things along those lines as well. But I would say Wichita is actually trying to pass where it's free admission for everyone to come to the pool. Just because admissions are not where they necessarily make the money, but the more people that come in, then they can add new programs or get them excited about new programs or things that they do charge for and then also charge at the concessions.
I was just curious, more than anything, but I think you're going to continually have turnover if you're always the lowest paying job on the pole floor, incoming workforce, so to say, the young workforce. They're always going to find something better.
And it's, I mean, it, sometimes people think lifeguards, you know, it's, it's a cush job. You get to hang out outside, get good tea on, but we have to remember like they are emergency personnel as well and in charge of these people's lives on a daily, so.
But I think with a pool manager, we'll see a much tighter system as far as the horseplay, the horse around, whatever.
That's, yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Not to allow, you know, it was one time we were getting claimed for slipping balls because who was in charge, you know? So we need to get the control of that.
Right.
So what, what's the recommendation? Going from seven by the corner?
She had it all right out there.
It's all there?
Yeah.
We need to.
So how are his disciplinary points being? Who, what's the process for the?
So we have an employee manual that they'll all get. I'm doing an orientation with all of the guards next week. And so there's an employee manual. I could send you the exact details, but it's like being late is like minus a point. Behavior is like minus a point or two. Like it's, it's detailed out what would, what would make you lose points or things along those lines.
Next to side by the pool manager?
It would be the manager or the assistant managers would send that on to the manager for the disciplinary action. Or if I were out there and saw something, then I would also step in.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to both these pool aquatic center wages as Aaron has them posted here. And, you know, I think it's something to try and see what happens, you know? Got to, got to go in some direction, try to get some help out there, so I'll make that motion.
I'd approve that or I'd agree too, because we, a lot we sit around and finally, a few, a few months ago, talked a lot about, you know, we may have to pay a little to get, you know, if we want somebody to become something or do something, it's time to step up. You can't do that with the low wage. And so, yeah.
So I have a motion by Jim and you second that, Al?
Yes.
Yes. All in favor? All in favor? Thank you, Aaron. All right, discussion items. The employee health and dental renewal, Tammy showed that to me or talked to me about it. I said we should consider looking at our options. I don't know that it gets looked at very close lately, but we went down. Considerable decrease this year, for this year. And we really probably don't have a whole lot of time to be trying to get other stuff in place or other options to look at. But I indicated to her that I thought we needed to try to figure out if this was, our grandfather plan was still the best option or if there's something else out there we need to look at. My biggest concern is employees with families and not being able to provide coverage for the families at a reasonable cost. Not sure we're going to find anything, but I thought we should look at it at some point. She's indicated here that she's not, has to turn it in by the middle of June. And she was going to look around a little bit, but I don't know that she's coming up with anything at this point. So it's probably going to end up beating this at our next meeting to approve. Or if you're not going to be here at the next meeting, should we give you the A okay to move on with it or what are you thinking?
I guess the thing I would like to maybe look at is that piece about, you know, if it's possible to contribute any more to the employees' families and dependents. And as far as the plan, I think we got a pretty good rate this year. And just some preliminary comparison, seems like our rate's actually pretty good. So we can move forward with it. It's probably what we'll have to do based on time.
That's what I'm kind of thinking, but I'm sure we'd like you to look into these other options here that you have. Yeah, because even if you found something, it'd be pretty hard to try to decide anything before mid-June.
I did get some rates as far as the state employee health plan and they are quite a bit more than what we're paying.
Oh, so you did, oh, okay.
I did, I did get that piece, so.
Oh, yeah, well, that they didn't remember, so.
No, that doesn't happen.
I was hoping you was going to, you know.
Didn't have it at the time of the memo, but.
Potted in the rainbow there or something.
I mean, we're talking a couple hundred dollars per employee less is what we're paying on this.
But we would be eligible for that program?
Yeah, I mean, we're eligible to participate in it.
But you're saying it's cost more, but is there any benefit or exactly the same benefit?
I think the plan is very comparable.
That's, yeah.
So a little bit she told me the contribution by the employer is what makes it so reasonable, so.
Yep.
They actually are contributing to the employer or the employee's family and spouse as well. Wherever that would be something we do not do.
Something maybe to look at for the next renewal cycle?
Are you on it? Take, is it option B that you're on?
That's what we, let me make sure I have the right one. Option B is the one that's, is one that's got the higher deductible and it's the one that we pay for the employee. So if the employee wants to go with option A, they pay the difference between that.
What you were saying, like, if we're saving $69, it looks like it'd be about a $37 or so dollar increase to go give them option A, which is, could save them $2,000 for the year if they use it on your deductible. Is that something that would be of help to any of them or?
I don't know, we only have, I think, one or two people who take option A right now. This $1,000 deductible and the copay we have is really a pretty good plan these days.
So the grandfather plan goes back maybe 10 years or more?
Yeah.
That's why I said it would maybe time to take a little look at it and make sure our grandfather plan is still the correct option. Leaning towards it probably is, but it doesn't hurt, I don't think it's ever really thoroughly been investigated at a reasonable time.
Well, who else? I mean, okay, whatever this state, whatever you was talking about, state deployed a benefit program. Got Blue Cross and Blue Shield. This is for anybody else that does this. I mean, is this Ambetter Sunflower, Ambetter insurance company, do they do?
Like there's, what is it called?
Ambetter, I forget what it's called. Sunflower, Sunflower by Ambetter or something like that.
I don't think I've heard of that one.
I think they're fairly new. In fact, you see commercials now. I actually, I actually look at it right now.
But there's some, Aetna, United Healthcare.
That can offer city.
The hospital has a plan I had never heard of anywhere else before. Mary?
Mary's here.
Is there other options besides Blue Cross?
There are.
But I think with our time constraint at this point.
Oh, yeah.
Right, you just as well go with, for this year. She's not going to be at the next meeting, so I'm telling her, I'm telling her that we should probably just move forward with the renewal paperwork unless somebody has a burning desire to do something else.
How does Cakers, do they fit into this at all?
They really don't do the health insurance piece of it. Their retirement and life insurance.
But it isn't gain, I mean, it's bringing some money that in.
Yeah, I mean, it's a benefit to them. Something else to think about on this is we always go directly to Blue Cross and that's the only company we go to. We could work with some kind of brokerage firm to shop out and market our plan to different ones and see what they could get us for rates at other companies. So that's an option that would probably be something we'd want to do in the next year, going ahead and moving forward with this now, but knowing that we need to start working on it.
We need to start working on that like in six months?
Yeah, I would say so. Because it takes a while.
If nobody else has anything about that discussion item, we'll go on. All right, I guess.
We want to get a motion.
Yeah, let's go ahead and move forward with that Blue Cross, so they don't make that motion.
I'll make an option, renew with Blue Cross, Blue Shield, the existing plan that we had.
Second.
Jim moves, Colley seconds, all in favor? All in favor. The next discussion item, accounts payable cycles. We pay the bills once a month. I guess we can pay however many times a month we want without being in any issue with our auditor or how we do things. So let you take up on that conversation, Tammy, while we even talk about it.
Well, right now what happens, and I wish I had a calendar with me for visual, but so 30th of the month was what, on a Friday this year? Or this month, was it April?
A Wednesday meeting, you shows up on the second, or third, everybody's trying to rush their bills.
Everybody's trying to run their bills on the end of the month. And then we can't get anything ready until like the day of the meeting. You guys don't see any of the bills until we bring them in here that night. And I just feel like it might be a better setup if we waited to pay them until the middle of the month. So that everybody could get their bills in on the first, we could get them ready and you would have in your package what we're going to pay that next week. And then you'd have time to look over them. And I think, I know the latest meeting we'd ever have would be the 21st. I think that if we have the checks ready by the 22nd, they would still get there before the end of the month and be paid on time. Right now, we are either paying some things late or we're having to do a lot of manual checks because things are going to be late. So we have to go ahead and do a check, which you end up approving later, which is okay if it's an emergency, but it's not how I prefer to do it. So I just think it might be better. And then the second thing was we could do it two times a month if we wanted to and just make sure they were always getting paid on time. As far as auditor's concerned, they don't care. They know the first month we change it, it's going to kind of screw up our numbers a little bit from, you know, if you're doing, analyzing what you're doing. Because basically right now, when we approve those checks on May 5th, they're all dated April 30th. So you're paying. So you're paying April's bills with an April dated check, but it's not actually done until May. So that first month, you would basically skip having bills paid in one month to move it into the next cycle. But they're okay with that, just we have to know that's what happened.
Well, our, our first Wednesday of the month can be the first or the second, and there's no way you're gonna get everybody's bills in here. They send their bill in here on the fifth, and they gotta wait a whole month before they're gonna see their check, because we gotta wait till the next first Wednesday of the month to get the eight. In fact, I never met, if it's like that, and I have a small bill, I hand deliver it every time, just because, you don't know how soon it's gonna take to get here.
So do you just wanna move it from the first to the second meeting, or do you wanna do two times?
I'm okay with moving it to the second. And if for some reason that doesn't seem like it's working, and it would be better to move it to two, then we can do that, that's an option.
I think moving to the second would be a lot easier.
I think that makes sense.
Than doing our split bill. Well, unless you can be sending them out to us ahead of time, you know how long we look at that stuff every night, and we're looking at them. We'd have time to look at them ahead of time, and maybe get some of the questions answered ahead of time, and we don't have to deal with it at the meeting either.
I guess that still gives you an option too, if you have some bills that come in that need to get out as quick as you can for some reason, or whatever.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
You can still do the appropriation report as the first meeting.
And the only time, the only time we'd have that problem, I think, is normally with our construction projects and stuff like that, because they gotta move at a certain pace, but... Because the latest we'd have our second meeting's the fifteenth.
Right. Twenty-first. If the first, if the first falls on a Thursday.
Oh, there's a problem to that.
I think it's fine, it's good.
We don't get a motion on that, just make it happen, right?
Yeah. The changes there. Preparation orders will have to, what comes forward is what it does. So, the next thing is the pet waste stations. Asked about that as well, I don't know if y'all read the memo or not. Uh, we had a lady wanted to come in and present information about it to us for education, and was interested in why in one of the stations, I thought there ought to be four of them around that old golf course. And I guess I don't know, I guess everybody's gonna have a different opinion on that. And my first indication was, it sounds like a good deal, but who's gonna be maintaining these pet stations? And is it the city's responsibility to take care of individuals' animals' problems? Was my first question, so.
What, what's all in this station?
Well, they put bags in there.
Right.
And then they dispose of their stuff there, so somebody's gotta go maintain that by.
So like, there's a barrel there, yeah. Like a trash receptacle barrel.
Yeah.
Bag, probably dispenser right there. Bag, throw it in there, tie it off, throw it in, it's my.
So it's just a matter of going out and getting the bags and use the bags?
Um, dispose of them though, if they fill up, we're gonna have to take care of it.
Yeah, the city would have to move, move them out.
I mean, is it that big of a deal, they had four more trashcans, starting with two more trashcans that somebody has to go empty every? So often when they go empty the ones at the parks and.
So where does that stuff go?
Probably need to be emptied quite regularly.
Well, you get a big enough trashcan, don't do one of those tiny ones, do like a normal trash.
You wanna leave the thing there for a month before you tell them?
Well, my dog's doo-doo sits in a bag in the trashcans around town for her until somebody goes and empties them, because that's, I bring my own bags.
I do too. But a lot of people don't.
A lot of people don't, and I think having them around would encourage people to hopefully pick up their doo-doo.
My god, I'm trying to think, trying to think it through. But, so who applied, who, who buys the bags?
We would have to.
Who?
The city would have to.
Yeah, and then if people are nice and leave it alone, instead of throwing or taking them, or, you know.
Yeah.
But I think, and then you'd have to, I just thought of.
What about some just signs that say, please pick up, so people know, we really want you to do that, rather than putting out a receptacle?
How many people have asked about this?
People have asked about this.
How many?
Oh, I'm just saying that this person.
Just this one person?
Wanted to come in, and she wanted the opportunity, she specifically asked. I want this to be on the agenda, because I wanna educate the public that it's important.
If you, if you read that, you'll see that her, but they, they know dogs real well, and now there's the, you don't protect, it's not just protecting them, it's helping your dog so they don't get sick because of my mouse poop on them, so. And, and it's been frustrating sometimes to see me walking around with my sacks of bears and stuff, that, that people don't care, you know? They just, they just take it out, or don't, the, the dog can go poop wherever they want, and then they go whine. And so it is frustrating.
I mean, I don't think having these are gonna make every single person think twice about it, but I think it will encourage... And I, well, I think signs are, I, I think signs are a good idea, potentially maybe even having, like, a couple signs at, like, maybe the parks. But if you don't have, if you just have a sign and you don't have anything, if somebody forgot to bring.
Grounds will be good enough.
I mean, like.
Well, that's what, I mean.
Yeah, exactly, and it's just.
There's no, if they forgot a bag, well, hey, I go back.
Because not everyone's crazy like me, that when their dog accidentally, I forget my bag, I go home and get a bag.
We have trash receptacles at the parks, so do we just spot bags at the parks?
Well, then that goes back to another question.
We don't have to get another trash.
Yeah, and then is that... I think it was, I think we, we talked about it today earlier, or during the meeting earlier, it was like, and the same thing I was, I was thinking about, what happened? Who's responsible for that? It'd be the city would have, would be their barrel. And then, what do you do, do you leave it till a certain part, and it's like, the mixture of the picknick and the, I don't know, I don't know.
But isn't that kinda pointing the bags, is they help mask the smell?
I think so. Who's our park community?
Well, that would be my deal, is where's this start and stop? I mean, put a couple out there, we gotta put them all over town, is it our responsibility to put them all over town? You know, to me, a pet owner is responsible for their pet, they need to be responsible for their pet. Cleaning some. I don't have a problem encouraging people to certainly, I'm sure they clean up after their dog. I don't know, they should be our responsible, I don't put stuff out there for them to do that. Responsible pet owners should be able to.
Most people are responsible, and they're gonna take it back if they're gonna do it anyhow. I mean, it's pretty seldom that you're out there with your dog, and you don't have something, if that's something you care about in the first place.
If they don't care about it, will they use them?
Yeah.
Anyways.
Is she, she said that they're interested in purchasing one. Is she interested in doing that, even if the city doesn't purchase one at the same time?
Probably, but I'd have to ask.
I mean, I just wonder if maybe as like a test one, if they want to purchase one, and we allow it to be on our, you know, in the park or wherever, near our trashcans, that we are going to empty. That maybe it would be a good test one to see if people are using, and then we can, like you said, monitor it and see if it is getting utilized, or if it just sits there and nobody cares.
So, if we're gonna allow that to happen, I guess that would have to be an action item at the next meeting.
Is that what we want, go to the next meeting?
So, I guess, she's requesting to purchase one. And she was requested to educate the citizens, is that a public comment thing? You know, and based on, if she's only gonna, if she wants to buy one, and we use it as a test site, is she okay with that? You know, whatever. And see what her response is, but I guess. Find out the details, and we'll go from there. Okay, then, the last discussion item is city hall improvements. And I assume everybody read this memo, so I'm not gonna go through it line item by line item, but she points out some valid points here. And, as I told her, I felt like this clerk's office deserved some immediate attention to get it functional for what we're trying to do. Make it more accessible maybe for the handicap as well. And then it goes right on into the long-term goals of trying to get something done with the complete building as far as energy efficient windows, of being able to do something with our upstairs. And of course, then everybody knows, at some point you have to talk about the basement, it's, where in the world do you start with that, you know?
We need some mess done.
But I don't think if we just continue with that closed eye to the condition of the building, it's just gonna continually get worse. So, well, I think that's.
At the committee level, what do you think, looking over and deciding certain project?
Well, I guess I'm leaning on Tammy with the new city clerks coming in to get started there. And then a more detailed plan of how you expect the rest of this to happen. And if there's grant funds that can be applied for, for historic buildings, let's try to utilize that the best we can. And let's do make the upstairs usable, and when you drive down the street, you don't see some of the torn down lines, or whatever you see, you know?
I do agree, we need to be looking at the windows, at least, to make it a little more energy efficient. For sure, and also makes it, makes the building look a lot, a lot nicer. Whether or not it goes along with the historical, you know, grants and stuff, because we gotta keep it as historical.
Exactly, because if, if you can get that grant, then the windows kinda have to stay the same size and be a similar.
Well, it'd be the same size, but, you know, you'd have to.
Well, a lot of people try to.
Double pay the windows.
Shrink the, the whole sizes down the same.
No, 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 you wouldn't wanna.
Don't wanna do that.
No, you don't wanna do that.
Because it's gonna be a price for windows of that size.
I probably don't remember, but Mr. Miller, does that, remember, a long time ago, has done some work for us.
Yep.
And did he get, finish all his project that we asked him to?
So the last people we had was a restoration company that did all the tuck pointing and stuff on the back of the building.
And over here on the, above this roof over here.
So he's done all that we asked him to?
Yeah, that was a bad spot, we're pretty, because this is, these two walls are a different type of brick, and the stuff on the back, and over there on that little side wall there, next to the business, was a different style. The mortar and everything just didn't last as good as, but this front's a different, and it's holding up pretty good. I mean, eventually, it's probably gonna have to be looked at too, but.
The condition of the roof?
I think it was replaced about...
About?
Ten years ago?
About eleven, because I think I just started.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
And that was that Midwest coating, has a nice roof, maybe it goes up there and looks at it, and kinda looks.
I think they figure those are guaranteed for twenty years usually, aren't they?
I think it's twenty, thirty, yeah.
So, I mean, realistically, we've done the roof, we've done some exterior work. We should probably continue on with whatever it takes to keep the building in good shape.
So it might be helpful to get him involved again, or he's busy with this?
Somewhere, I guess, there you go, at a committee level, what is he really interested in doing at this point in his life too? You know, I don't know that that's something that he would want to tackle. But, I'm not sure how we landed with the last company we used either, I'm not sure what process that was.
I just put it out for bids.
I don't think I was sure when we did the tuck pointing, we were talking about it, but then.
It was like three, it was like three years ago, because my office was so full of dust, it wasn't even funny, speaking of windows.
We had, I think we had two bids on that, if I remember correctly. And one was extremely high.
Well, I would say one of the steps would be to start looking at any grant money for, you know, some restoration deals, to see about if there's, what there is out there.
There's, I'll look, it's in my, there's, it's a USDA, or there's a something with, like, energy efficient stuff.
But you go, if you start going down this historic preservation type grant, I mean, there's other grants out there, but if you start going into that, then, then your, your hands are a little bit tied, you can, you can't change, you can't take a wall out, you cannot move a door away, or something like that, a lot, there's a lot of.
I think our hands are probably already a little tight, because it's on the historic register.
Oh, it already is?
I'm sure it does already.
So, it's an historic district.
Three blocks of it.
Every building down here is?
Almost, most, probably about eighty-five percent of them are contributing.
Hey, you're not gonna change the exterior structure.
No, I believe that'll even, the interior walls, so I'll hold you up on stuff.
I think it's mainly exterior.
Idea of what you wanna accomplish in the city clerk's office relatively soon.
I do.
So what I would suggest is, you put that proposal together, bring it to a committee level, and bring, and then we'll bring it back to the full council for a recommendation. And then, in that committee meeting, I think there ought to be some more steps talked about, about how we wanna attack the rest of it.
And if I wanna do some, like, furniture updates, as far as, like, errands in my offices, and moving some of the older stuff to shop, is that okay, or?
We want the office to be functional, so I think that's gonna.
It's a cost, it's.
Put up, put up your deal with, like, option A, option B, I wanna do furniture, whatever, and give us some different, just give us some ideas. All we need was some cost, with some rough, with some rough cost estimates.
Alright.
Okay. Other notes. The city received donations in the amount of twenty-seven fifty for the pitching machines, so we'll be buying pitching machines, or we did?
They're here, we just haven't gotten the.
So when you see a bill for the pitching machines, it's actually been taken care of by donations, but it'll go through.
How many?
Twenty-seven hundred and fifty bucks for two pitching machines. And she's been working on this American Rescue Plan, keeping up on it, not real sure where that's gonna go for sure. But it, to be determined. Michelle starts May twenty-fourth, Angel goes full-time May twenty-eighth. Planning Commission June third. Tammy's out June one through four, so she won't be here to the next meeting. And auditors will be here June ninth and tenth. Other than that, if nobody else has anything else, I would say.
I got one little piece, and it's not a big deal, but what, and I think we go through it every year, and you probably don't know off the top of your head, what is the, uh... Keeping your grass cut down, what's the height it's gotta get to before we go out there and say, hey, we're gonna cut it and charge you?
Be spent out there doing it.
Well, the only thing, I guess, it was kinda bad to be nice before the hundred and fiftieth. Senex, BP, and the Big B look like pasture grounds on the big Kansas road trip. And you know, you can only, if it's ten inches and it's six inches, you can't complain, but can we at least reach out to them and say, I know you ain't over. reach out to them and say, I know you ain't over the limit, but can you clean up the joint a little bit before the weekend festivities? I had two different people and I was like, yeah, I've noticed that, but they're from out of town, they're a you thought that'd been cleaned up for, we had a lot of people in town, I don't know how many came through from Kansas Road Trip, but I'm guessing we're gonna have quite a few for the hundred and fiftieth.
Jordan had been in contact with them and I think their time was up tomorrow or today.
Has BP and Senex the same owner yet?
Yeah, Big B, but Big B did get theirs cut probably the week after Kansas Road Trip was over.
I was just gonna tell you that Elmer's been, there's a connection to, LaShay works in Topeka. And um, he said, he wants to mow, he wants to, he calls him up, calls and go tell him, Mr., it's a Haggard, H-A-G.
H-A-G.
And, and he, and he's somewhere, he's somewhere in Florida and the sun's, I think, around here, but he's, he's caught, Elmer's called him several times to say, hey, your, your lawn is terrible.
I understand that, but there's.
But they don't need it anymore.
Okay, but when we refenced the tall lawn, he knows who to get ahold of, say, hey, here's your deal, or what would you do, send him a letter or how's that?
I think he spoke to him on the phone, I don't know that he sent him a letter.
But I just didn't know that, it's not a big deal, but it'd be nice if it was cleaned up at least for that weekend and, well, continue to be cleaned up, but it, you know.
Yeah, I would just like to notify them and do the process and then, and their time is up, go mow it and send them a bill. That's all.
But when you can reach out to them like that, it'd be nice if they could, you could say, hey, it would be nice if you could clean that up for this weekend. Because they could mow it tomorrow and they won't have to mow it again for six weeks, because it ain't gonna get to that height again, so.
I know George's been on, cause he asked me if I knew about that Senex outfit.
And I thought Big B had somebody to process by that, but I don't know that it never happened either.
That's what we were told on Senex and BP too, so. I don't know what's going on with any of them properties, but it'd be nice to get something to go with.
I guess so, figure out a way to, I mean, we can't hold, we can't hold them to it by the code and it'd be nice if you could say, hey.
Some outfit out of Georgia that bought both of those sites, so they're not local.
What sites?
The.
Hey, go on.
Senex.
Oh, they bought both, the gas stations?
Couple times ago.
And Big B?
No, not Big B.
No, just Angel.
Yeah, Senex one and then.
Whoever was Big B, Big B, I talked to him the other one afternoon, he had something lined up with the guy. He didn't really know what they do.
Okay. Alice move?
Second?
Jim Seggs, all in favor? All in favor.